Let's call me the word with what's allegiance. What's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and just. Public comment.
Jeff Donco Palo Alto, just looking to see if the hiring practice was looked into regarding the degree required, not required on the stuff outside there. Also with the nepotism that is occurring, back when Ms. Dudish hired her brother in that whole debacle, the State Ethics Commission recommended that a nepotism policy was put in place. Again, as of Mr. Rice, I think two weeks ago, there was none put in place, none drafted, and we're just thumbing our nose again at the higher agency, so when is that gonna stop? Again, there were people that were told not to apply for this job because they didn't have that degree, then it was awarded to someone that didn't have a degree, and nepotism occurred within that office, so again, just open yourselves for another lawsuit, but when that comes down the pike, I'll stand here and say, I told you so.
Jeff, that is a controller's office, they have a 1620 already, they can hire whoever they want, and as far as I know, the person does have a degree. I don't know who's saying that they don't have a degree, but I did ask about it, and she does have a degree.
As far as you know, or?
It's not by her office.
But still nepotism, so.
And just for the record, I did pursue her mail points back, she is the brightest and most organized person.
Yeah.
I get that, but if you're violating the policy that the state.
I have never told anybody not to apply, I even had forward lift operators applying for that job, so I don't know where that comment ever came from, because I never told anybody not to apply. And it's amazing when you do call people back, you tell them the starting salary has to be like half experience. So, and as for the nepotism, they do not, nepotism, Jeff, is A, when I would hire my niece, my nephew, my child, or if someone in the office is overseeing that other person. Those two positions are wholly separated, there's no supervision to, you know, you're talking about my filthy girls, there's no supervision whatsoever.
Not yet, but potential could come down, so neither one of them are ever gonna go hires, what you're saying, they're gonna stay there.
My job, if one of them wants to run against me, maybe, but no, they're not, and one of those jobs is a union job, and the other one is a non-union job, there is never going to be that.
The person that I spoke to directly, came in the horse's mouth, was told not by you to not apply for it because they did not have a degree, so.
But then who told them, if somebody here told them, tell us what it is, I'm like, you look.
In the HR office. Definitely happened. Alright.
Yeah, I started, I started.
Children and youth, again, old Lisa Stevens. Five years.
I've been asking Michael Pink to team up with something.
Well, I have other things now, so five years now running that she hasn't attended the meeting, I think you guys should call her out, she is the director, you guys are paying her a crazy amount of money. She essentially robbed the county and the taxpayers, and then, I mean, Larry, just gave her a raise, a substantial raise, and she never shows up at a meeting. Have her come to a meeting and address this, or at least give her a report, Carl's her little puppet, so have her come to a meeting, I mean, everybody else does. She should be here, I understand now, what I was told is the retention bonuses may be disappearing next month, so if they disappear, children and youth is probably the second most stressful job in the county behind the nine one operators. Both are extremely understaffed and underpaid, we know that, and if those retention bonuses disappear, which you're talking about, quite a few of your work staff is definitely disappearing, so sadly, that's the only thing that kept them there, it's not the work environment or leadership. So, you might wanna look into figuring a way out to keep those. Also, there was an issue with Ms. Stevens and the state police, I wanna know if you guys looked into that at all, that was a pretty serious matter, so you might wanna look into that, I don't know why I have to keep coming here and telling you guys everything that's happening, but I did some write to no requests on papers on that, so we'll see once I get those reports. And lastly, I just have about the tax sale, another debacle, tax sale. Again, this is Elite that is hiring for Unlimited to take over. Two hundred and eleven properties are supposed to go to sale, the day the people arrived at eight thirty in the morning, they get these papers here, which four were put out for Trump bids for the land bank, which is normal, ninety-seven were continued until December. One was added that demolition was required the day of, so it's two hundred and eleven properties, a hundred and two, over forty-eight percent of the properties, the day of are taken off. These people travel for hours, you know, take the day off work, go to the bank, get the cash out to pay that day, and then they're told the day of that a hundred and two are taken off. One of the representatives from Elite, okay, I'm mistaken, one representative from Elite told the gentleman in front of me that was extremely pissed off, that they're still working everything out in the office from the last person that was in charge, and it was in total disarray, and that the people that are back now, they hope to have it all changed by December soon, so hopefully.
Yeah, but the asking, I think, did an excellent job, this job was.
It went smoothly and quickly, because they saw all their properties.
But it's better than the last one, because the last one is.
All continued, right.
And we honor everybody that registered.
They said they're gonna do that again in December.
For the last one, we honor everybody's registration to this one.
And they said that.
And then we'll probably do it again.
He announced that at the sale.
So, it's not like we're not working correct the problems of that all, and I think the director and the assistant director and all the staff did an excellent job, had this set up.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Absolutely, we had signs up here, so there wasn't confusion, we had signs everywhere, so they needed where to go, you know what I mean, so I think it, you know.
It just, I mean, forty-eight percent of the sales, and you're only told that day.
That happens sometimes in other counties, and it's just, we're, you know, by the next, by the next sale, hopefully we have it corrected better.
Just five, six years ago, there was never.
We're working the family.
I got it, thank you.
Any other public comment?
Mike Miller, Higgins Township, I'm here on behalf of my property, as you all know, I wanna thank the commissioners for working with me on this situation and everybody involved. Just here to find out if you have any new information on permitting or anything that's going on with DEP. We do have a meeting set up, September third, didn't think we'd get it that quick, but I'm happy that it's moving forward to get this resolved. It was a mess, so I'm not real happy with DEP, a few people in it, I didn't hear anything back from Stephanie Lebinski, like she said she was going to get return calls for me, didn't hear anything there, hopefully we get resolved Tuesday on the third. So, other than that, I'm hoping to see you all on September third with Senator Argo.
And we're still working on trying to set this meeting up, I don't know if the rest of the county will be there. We're still trying to do it. Yeah, so can we have it set up now, September?
I hope we have the right officials at this meeting.
It's the same day of what we're talking here, right?
No, that is something that I don't know.
I know that, but the dates are just, the call and this.
I think we have called the same day.
But it's earlier, it's earlier, I think. Do you have how many different calls? But yeah, so hopefully we get some resolution there, I'm gonna air my hard concerns as a county with the, and bring up the questions that I had last time, having somebody sort of from the county, a lot of questions that still have a good answer, so I'm gonna bring them up too, but first of all, I'm gonna just.
Thank you.
Thank you, any other public comment?
Good morning, name is George, I come from Alto, once again, I'm here for the senior citizens and the veterans of Skooko County, and wherever they are, in the state, in the United States. I hope yous are seeing that more and more people are losing their homes, losing their jobs, so they can't pay taxes and everything else, and there's just no help out there, especially for the people that are on the set incomes. I don't know where they get this idea in their head, if you're making a, I'm just gonna use a small figure, a hundred thousand dollars a year, you go to the store, you go to the market, anywhere, wherever you go, you're paying the same price. If you're a senior citizen on the set income, now I wanna know who in their right mind thinks that's fair? Please raise your hand, you think that's fair? Well, evidently, everybody agrees with me, try to get this across, local officials, try to get this across to senators and congressmen, and, you know, they all turn their heads, oh yeah, we're gonna look into it, we're gonna help these people, we're gonna help them. But yet, every week, every day that goes by, more and more people are losing their homes, and I wanna get on this reassessment again, I think it's foolish, if you're gonna hurt these people that are already hurt, and I'm, hey, I'm waiting, and you heard what I said to Senator Argo. Buddy, if I lose my home, guess who I'm coming to live with? And I said it straight to his face, I'm not a person to call on the phone and make a statement, I'm a person, I'll see you face to face, I'll give you my answer, and I see visions here. I'm telling him right now, buddy, I'm telling you, you're gonna hear from me, Vision's gonna hear from me, this courthouse is gonna hear from me, everybody, and I don't care if I'm the only person that ever comes in this courthouse to argue this point. People are losing their homes, this is ridiculous, I work, I paid into the system, so did my wife, we didn't have high-paying jobs. I have great volumes, people that do have great, high-paying jobs, but remember the ones that are on the short end, that's the problem in this United States. To hell with the ones that are on that, and excuse my language, because I never get like that, I never, this is so ridiculous, I'm so tired of coming in here and have to say it. I wish these other people that hear my voice right now, get off their back ends, come into these meetings, go to Argo's office, and start complaining, that's the only way you're gonna get anything done. And then, you may not get it, but they're gonna know, hey, we're not doing right for the people that put us in office, that are supposed to be taking care of us, play by the rules, pay the taxes, and then you're gonna harm these people, this is ridiculous. And I'm just telling you, something has to change, and change now, thank you.
Good morning, Mary Jo Moss, West Brunswick, I'm just felt moved to come down and talk about reassessment for a second, there's a couple of things happening. In one of the school districts, they sent out a letter at the end of the school year and said that they're raising taxes, and one of the reasons that they gave was the reassessment, wrong. There is, it's a net zero impact on revenue for the county.
Which school district was it, Mary Jo?
Yours.
Whose district is it too, Mary Jo?
Mine.
Okay, just, it's not just mine, your school district.
Right, well, you know, we went to all these reassessment meetings for education, I was so disappointed to see that my school district, who I consider to be extremely educated and well-versed, was sending out things that are completely ignorant as far as the reassessment. So my, you know, my point for coming down is to say, keep educating, those business managers we met with, you know, now they're out there saying they're raising taxes because of the county and the reassessment, wrong, it's absolutely wrong. Now, the other piece of it, I watch the economy very, very closely, and the Fed just was at Jackson Hole, and they gave the strongest indicator that interest rates are coming down. And what that means is that the real estate market is gonna change drastically, very, very concerned, I'm following a property right now in Skooko Haven, Gary, and it went from a value, and Linda has real estate, you know, experience too, three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars in, like, the end of June, is now on like a Zillow, Redfin type thing, is down fifty thousand dollars. So, you know, it's been a real tight supply for real estate, and now with interest rates anticipated to come down, supply should open up and flood the market, it's gonna be crazy for the next year or so. So, so, and I brought this up at the meetings when we had public meetings, and I said, well, you know, this could be a real estate bubble that pops, what happens? And the answer is that, well, we take a three-year, we take a three-year average, but this is, to put this aberration, which may be a huge spike, into the three-year average is dangerous, because the, so we have a zero net income or revenue change, but if a real estate market pops, right? Afterwards, every resident is going to be able to appeal, and that is a revenue decrease for our counties, our county, our schools, and our municipalities. So, I'm just word of caution today to just talk about reassessment, where we're at, where we are with the economy, and to proceed very carefully, because it's, we could bankrupt the county if everybody appealed, and they would have the right to do it, and it would decrease revenue. It's, it's a dangerous situation, so, you have your hands full.
Any other public comment?
Melinda DiBert, North Mannheim Township, I would like to say thank you to all three commissioners for at least coming out and surveying Mr. Miller's property, and doing what you can to address his situation, understanding that the county commissioners only have a limited amount of control or power. You have no control over DEP and the state agencies who are responsible for enforcing and making sure that Mr. Frank Kromis had the proper soil conservation plan, permit approved by DEP and in place. It seems like it should be a fairly succinct and short turnaround time to find out from Stephanie Lebinski at the Soil Conservation District, whether Mr. Kromis actually had an ENS, an erosion and sediment control plan in place. Understanding that he was not required by law or by statute to have that filed at the Conservation District, but it should be a simple phone call or a visit over to Mr. Kromis's address over there in Sacramento, to walk into his office and say, show us, show us your ENS permit for that twenty acres, that apparently raw human sewage was applied to. Then we have to put some pressure on DEP, they should absolutely be conducting an investigation of NSP, natural soil products, to see what their testing procedures are, because they're the entity that has to ensure that every truckload of waste, I'm not even calling it biosolids, because it does not fit the definition of biosolids. Anything that is leaving that property, they are responsible for conducting the testing on that material prior to it being applied to any sort of agricultural parcel. So, wondering why two, three weeks later, we can't get answers to very simple questions, not sure if people saw that it was advertised in our local paper yesterday that CES landfill is looking for major permit modifications. So now we have, and the public has sixty days to get your responses, your objections in, if you're in opposition to these major permit modifications, looking to extend their lifetime on that landfill. So, we have CES, we have Brad's landfill. It's almost like these owners are running scared right now, they're panicking and trying to hurry up and get these permit modifications in, because they are hearing that the people of Skooko County, and especially the western end of Skooko County, are fed up. They're fed up, and they're not gonna take it anymore, so I did wanna point out, Riley Township does have a meeting, a township meeting this evening at seven thirty at the Newtown Fire Hall. So, anyone who's interested in showing up at that meeting and kind of, they do have a public comment portion, if anyone would like to show up and express their concerns, okay, thanks.
Any other public comment? Should we let Tim go now, or what? Tim, do you want, can you do a brief? A brief overview? And I'm gonna emphasize brief.
Is there an implication here that I'm long-winded? Especially when we get into Q and A, but I will do that in the hallway, like I did the last time, so if anybody wants to talk to me after the meeting, I'll be available either in the hallway or in the assessment office. I'm Tim Barb with Vision Government Solutions, I'm the project director of the reassessment, I'm also an executive director with Vision, and have been doing this for forty years, most of you know who I am at this point, the most popular guy in Skooko County, second only to your three commissioners. Respectfully, the, first, let me give a quick technical report, a hundred percent of the residential properties have now been visited by our data collection teams. We are doing follow-up, what we call revisits or QC, that might occur anywhere within the county, but a hundred percent of the residential properties have been visited. We have also visited thirty-nine percent of the commercial properties have been visited by our data collection teams, we've transitioned everybody from residential collection to commercial collection, with the exception of the folks doing QC. We've also completed seventy-two percent of the residential data entry into the computer, we've actually touched more parcels than that, but the ones that are, seventy-two percent are complete from the data entry standpoint. We've been working with the assessment office, and I wanna thank them and the county GIS on what's called neighborhood delineation. Your local folks know this county better than I ever could, even though my project director is from the county, your staff across the hall is very familiar with the county, so what we've done is, we've taken GIS maps, geographical information systems, computer maps, and identified housing developments and subdivisions that have been created in the last thirty years. Because as all of you know, they don't always sell the same as something that maybe was there thirty years ago, a new development goes in, that development's gonna have a different value than the rest. So, identifying locations is a critical part of that, so that has been progressing. The, our valuation team has been studying your sales, looking at the prices that people have paid over the last, we've actually looked even as far back as six years, just to see what the trending has been. And let me speak a little bit to the, to the questions and thoughts on valuation, because I've been through this in a county two years north, we mailed change of assessment notices in two thousand and eight, everybody knows what happened in two thousand and eight. Those values were based on sales from seven, six, and five, so all the values were inflated, all the millage rates were lower, and for years, that county ranked really high in state statistics, because they were upside down, their values were high and their millages were low. Over time, that market changed and came up to current levels, but here's the concerns, and I'm a pragmatist about this. The school districts might be talking about needing to raise taxes now, because they know they're not gonna be able to do spot appeals when the reassessment is over, legally, they can, but there will be no point in it, because there will not be big-ticket properties under assessed for them to go get, so they know that's not gonna happen. It is revenue neutral, and I wanna thank the previous speaker for pointing that out, it will be a net sum zero to the tax base of every taxing body the year this is implemented, it is helpful to think about what's gonna happen the year after. Most property owners, if the market does drop, aren't going to appeal, they don't go to the trouble, they don't know how, it's your big-ticket properties that typically will file appeals, and will get reductions if they win at the appeals board level. So, being aware that that's coming, honestly, commissioners, the only cure for that is something you've already advocated and talked about, is to get this on, sorry, get this on a rolling cycle, that maybe every three to four years, you're adjusting for those differences in the market, bringing the values down to balance it back out again. But as an assessor, I can't set a value based on the future, I can't anticipate what the new brokerage fee things that pass this month are gonna do to the real estate market. I can only look at the evidence of what has historically occurred in the real estate market and set a point in time value, so that's what we're gonna do, and it'll be interesting to see what happens, but it will be lower millage rates if the market does in fact do this shift. The other comment that was made is the concept of how do we help people through this, lots of folks are gonna come in, we will have tens of thousands of interviews with individual taxpayers. We will have tens of thousands of interviews with individual taxpayers between now and this time next year. Tens of thousands of property owners, we're going to help them go through an informal review where we verify the data, and if necessary, a formal appeal, which is, there's no appraiser or attorneys involved, that's just an administrative process. There might be an appraisal involved if people want to get one. But that procedure is normal for a revow. And we're going to do everything, and the county's going to do everything to help people through that process. So we want to make sure that no one pays a dollar more than they have to and no one pays taxes on a number that isn't based on the accurate description of their property. So ultimately, we're in a good spot, lots of work to do, lots ahead of us, but, and a lot of concerns, well-founded concerns, which we appreciate. If there's other additional questions, I'll be happy to take them outside.
One quick, when you and Matt, we've talked about this before, this data taking place over several months and even over a year. The actual, it'll be a spot snapshot at one point in time. Just because your property was potato, was taken, and you're gone, and mine's being done next year, isn't material. That's just measurements, right?
That is correct. The physical description, what we have, per court settlement, we have visited and checked every single property or will when we finish the commercials deal. We will spot check the data on, not spot check, we will, every property gets a visit to make sure that that description is right. If something has happened in the year since we were there, that there would likely be a building permit or some other notification to assessment, and then the Assessment Office picks it up. So they follow us with maintenance in areas that we may have already been. And then there's been constant collaboration on that too. At the end of the day, it takes two things to set a new reassessment value. Good data and then good values. The values come from the sales. And that too is a point in time, that there is basically an appraisal date that everything is adjusted and that becomes the foundation. And honestly, it'll be locked in for three years, four years, or 30 years. Who's to say?
Can't be 30 years, because that's the reason we're in this mess. Is because you look at other states, you know, we've done research, and I've been talking to Representatives of the House, Senators, everything. Harrisburg needs to fix this problem. If you would do it every four years, there's no reason for any school district to spot assess. Because that's what throws your common level ratio out. Mary Jones on Blue Mountain School Board, they stopped reassess, they stopped spot assess with the Blue Mountain School District. So you'll have a home in the Blue Mountain Scissor School District that's worth $400,000. And one in the Thomas School that does the reassessments when a property is bought. So those two properties are worth the same similar homes, but they're taxed at two different rates. So that throws your common level ratio out across your county.
Yes, spot appeals are not our friend for uniforming.
And that's what it is. Blue Mountain stopped, surrounding school districts did, that's why Blue Mountain had expanded growth. But surrounding school districts didn't stop it. If you would reassess every four years, you would stop, no school district would have to do spot reassessments in a new shape and form. Your common level ratio will stay the same because that's what we were sued on. Is that our common level ratios outline? That's what the county was sued on.
And your coefficient of dispersion, the average area is so high.
And then if we would do it every four years, the fluctuation in people's properties would be minimal. It's because it's 30 years.
Well, and something that may not be obvious to folks. This reassessment, this is obvious, is very expensive. The amount of people we've had to hire and the mileage we pay and all of the expense, it is very expensive to do a turnkey reassessment after 30 years. No hiding that, that's a multi-million dollar contract. The county assessment is following us, as I mentioned, with maintenance, and they will continue to do that. So over the next three to four years, they will maintain the data. You will not need to go knock on every door and annoy every property owner and say, "Hey, I'm here to check your data." That won't be necessary. All you will have to do to update values on a cycle is watch the sales and study the market and then go through the process of an informal review and a formal appeal. It's a fraction of the cost and half or more of that cost can be done by the county. So the cost of doing cyclical reassessments is a fraction of the cost of doing a turnkey. So please don't think that anyone's advocating for a multi-million dollar reassessment every four years. That they're not. And this has proven out. There's lots of counties, not recently, but I have one in particular that did three reassessments in 10 years. This is a long time ago, their first one was $40. The last one was four. Now, all the prices have gone up since then, but it was 10% of the cost to do their third reassessment because they just got it down to a routine.
If Schuylkill County would wait 10 years to do a reassessment, it would be 10% roughly of the cost that it is now.
Yeah, depends on how long, if you can keep your data, the longer you go, the harder it is not to have to visit all the properties again, and that's the biggest price.
But once again, this is a Harrisburg issue, we need to fix this. Maryland does it, I've been researching this lots, Florida does it every year, Maryland does it every four years, and the property value chain fluctuations are minimal. So the county can do enough to stay in there. Yeah, and that's only, but that's only going to have to look into because I don't want anybody to ever go through, you know, a massive swing in their property value ever again in this county, like waiting 30 years, like people kicking the can down the road. Anytime you kick the can down the road, it bites you somewhere. I'm not going to use the word, you know, it bites you. So that's what it is.
I'd use the analogy, if you don't ever go to the dentist, you're going to need a root canal and they're expensive and painful. To your point, the county can do cyclical reassessments on their own. It would be nice if Pennsylvania wasn't the only state that had no guidelines, no regulations and no funding to help counties do that. That would be nice if they would do that, and they're talking about it again. But they've been talking about it for 30 years too. But there's more activity of late, and that's promising. The second part of it though is the basis shift. You know, we can get the assessments to be uniform, we can do cyclical updates to adapt to the market that changes over time. But we also need tax reform that reduces the burden on real estate so that the gentleman who is no longer in school, has no kids in school, is living on a fixed income, is not funding the predominant way we pay for all of our government. We need to shift the burden, and I'm getting on my bully pulpit now a little bit, this has nothing to do with my job as an assessor, it has to do with my years as an assessor. We need to see tax reform to shift the burden away from real estate tax. Not completely, but maybe half. Wouldn't it be awesome if we could cut all the real estate taxes in half and fund it with people who are driving through the county paying sales tax? Or something like that? That would be phenomenal. That's the part that can only happen in years.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Tim, before you, I just want to know, and I know in the beginning you put out timelines, and again, I appreciate you coming in here and giving us an update per month. But again, if you can do it on social media, the press is here, is to give a timeline on what's next to go in line, especially with the values and everything else, to keep that up to date. Because again, people heard that last year, but again, not to know what's coming in and try to do that in more of a, you know, monthly or bi-monthly type thing.
More information.
The more information, the better, to let the public know because again, people are still, you know, not sure on what to look at and stuff. We're going to get out there.
No, I appreciate that, Gary. And actually, it gives me a... It gives me... It gives me the opportunity to point out, everyone can go to Schuylkill County's website, and if you go to the reassessment tab, there's status reports, and we update that every month. The timeline is actually at the top of that report each time to remind folks that the next things are data verification and informals next year.
What Gary is saying, yes, it's on our website, but it's more of a public outreach to people.
Yes. And I want to thank the public. Appreciate that.
Okay? Thank you. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes of the Commissioners' meeting on August 14?
Slow move.
Second, other question?
Mr. Pedora?
Yes.
Mr. Heatherington?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Could I have a motion to approve the work session meeting minutes on August 1st?
Slow move. Second.
Other question?
Mr. Pedora?
Yes.
Mr. Heatherington?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Could I have a motion to approve the five items that were presented by children and youth at our work session?
Slow move. The two are new. Second.
Other question?
Mr. Pedora?
Yes.
Mr. Heatherington?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
So the grant writers, the last one's going to be removed because there's a change in modification that a hearing must be done. So that one has to be taken off, the grant writers, the last one. There's six, one needs to come off the fifth one. So we need a motion to approve one, two, three, four, five, five things for the Grant Writers' Office that was approved at our work session.
Motion to approve the five grant writers approved at our request. Second.
Other question?
Mr. Pedora?
Yes.
Mr. Heatherington?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Could I have a motion to approve our engineering and liquid fuels that was presented at our work session meeting?
Slow move. Second.
Other question?
Mr. Pedora?
Yes.
Mr. Heatherington?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Could I have a motion to approve what was presented by the Public Defender's Office at our work session?
Slow move. Second.
Other question?
Mr. Pedora?
Yes.
Mr. Heatherington?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Could I have a motion to approve the items that were presented by the Sheriff's Office at our work session?
Slow move. Second.
Other question?
Mr. Pedora?
Yes.
Mr. Heatherington?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Could I have a motion to approve the five items that were presented at the work session by the Office of Senior Services?
Slow move. Second.
Other question?
Mr. Pedora?
Yes.
Mr. Heatherington?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Could I have a motion to approve what was presented at the work session by the prison?
Slow move. Second.
Other question?
Mr. Pedora?
Yes.
Mr. Heatherington?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Could I have a motion to approve the five items that were presented by drug and alcohol at our work session?
Slow move. Second.
Other question?
Mr. Pedora?
Yes.
Mr. Heatherington?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Could I have a motion to approve what was presented by the Court Administration at our work session?
Slow move. Second.
Other question?
Mr. Pedora?
Yes.
Mr. Heatherington?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Could I have a motion to approve what was presented by our Solicitors' Office at our work session?
Slow move. Second.
Other question?
Mr. Pedora?
Yes.
Mr. Heatherington?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Could I have a motion to approve what was presented by the County Administrator at our work session?
Motion to approve the Hubert Koch Resource Contract. Second.
Other question?
Mr. Pedora?
Yes.
Mr. Heatherington?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Could I have a motion to approve the Treasures Report?
Motion to approve for July 2022. Yes.
Other question?
Mr. Pedora?
Yes.
Mr. Heatherington?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Can I have Hubert Resources?
Yes, good morning Commissioners. We have four items. In tax claim, the appointment of Deborah McDonald as a clerk test, one for DM, the rate is 14.8913, effective 9/34. For children and youth, the appointment of Jay Schalberg, county caseworker, one, the rate is 20.9412, effective 9/30/24, salaries per contract. And drug and alcohol, the appointment of Michelle Mailey, fiscal officer, one, the rate is 27.3796, effective 9/9/24. And the Office of Senior Services, the appointment of Mark Babardi, aging care manager, three, rate is 19.72, effective 9/3/24, salaries per contract. We also have two informational items in Court Administration, the appointment of Raymond Dorian Law, clerk per DM, effective 9/3/24. And in emergency management, the appointment of Benjamin Angelo, unpaid intern, effective 9/4/24. That is all. The appointments are pending drug tests and fiscal are appropriate and all actions involving salary or propositions being created are pending salary board approval.
Could I have a motion for the four appointments, because I would like Hubert Resources?
Second.
Other question?
Mr. Pedora?
Yes.
Mr. Heatherington?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
Yes.
Paul Hoover.
Commissioners, good morning. This morning I have several items that I'd like to present. First of all, there's five budget adjustments that are listed in your agenda for today. The five budget adjustments have been posted outside the board. I would also like to present supplemental budget appropriation, Resolution 2024-16, on behalf of the Risk Management Department for $85,000. Commissioners, what this resolution is about, the county self-insures for workers' compensation purposes. We anticipate that there's going to be more claims filed for this year than what was originally budgeted. So therefore, we need to increase the appropriated line items to accommodate those claims. I want to emphasize that this additional source of funds that is needed is available, it's in program reserves in the Workers' Compensation Internal Service Fund. There's no additional cost to the County General Fund.
Could I have a motion to approve the appropriation Resolution 2024-16?
Slow move. Second.
Other question?
Mr. Pedora?
Yes.
Mr. Heatherington?
Yes.
Mr. Hess?
During new business, could I have a motion to adjourn?
Slow move.
Just quickly, the next work session meeting is a normal day and time, Wednesday, September 4th, at 10:00 a.m. in Commissioner's Forum. The prison board will meet on its normal day, Wednesday, September 11th, at 11:00 a.m. in the Commissioners' Board Room, and then our Commissioners' Meeting on September 11th will be at 6:00 p.m. here in the Commissioners' Forum, that's one of our night meetings. Thank you. Salary Board, report of any executive sessions?
We're done.
Public comment for Salary Board?
Jeff Dunkelpallo Alto. Just real quick about the reassessment. Another company with horrible reviews that were hired. Also, it's still not certified. Larry, you were on record that you were opposing it, not certifying it. Hopefully that stays and we can continue with that. Appeals might not even be needed. Boots had stated on a public, at a public meeting, that the reason why it wasn't fought was because it would have cost $100,000. Instead, we spent $12 million. So if each property owner would, I guess like a dollar and a quarter, each parcel, if we can collect a dollar and a quarter from everybody, we could fight it. So maybe that's something to look into, because we'd rather pay $12 million than $100,000. But anyway, a couple of weeks ago, Ms. Gaffney was here disputing a claim about her work ethic, which is very clear. She stated that she was on FMLA. Sharon, was she on FMLA that you were aware of?
Officials.
No?
Like the officials don't.
Thank you for stating that. Because according to the Department of Labor and Office of Personnel Management, no FMLA is available for county elected officials. But she stated on record here at a meeting that she was on FMLA. Also, she worked less than 60 hours since January as of that meeting, which I'm sure the trend is continuing, 60 hours in six months. Did she receive pay then during that time? Her salary? Okay. So she was claiming that she was on FMLA, I'm requesting that she reimburses the county the approximate $12,000 that she basically robbed from them. Even if she was able to get FMLA and qualified for it, it's only available for 12 weeks up to 480 hours. What about the other 900 hours that she hasn't been here? Just curious, since January. Also, you must have worked 1,250 hours in the previous 12 months. She's been here 12 years and hasn't worked 1,250 hours total. So again, she wants to come here and say that she's being bashed and harassed. Do your job, you're getting paid over $60,000 a year. Obviously, you're not doing your job. So I think Commissioners should look into acting on something. How do we get her impeached? Let's start something. I mean, she's claiming she's getting FMLA, but she's not, she's robbing the county. You can't be on FMLA. So why come here and say that? So I'd like the Commissioners to look into her work ethic, how many hours she's been here. I know she's salaried and all that stuff. Let's look into something and get that office back in shape as well. Thank you.
Any other public comment, Salary Board?
Melinda Dyberg, North Mannheim Township. During my previous three minutes, I guess I didn't have time to bring it up anyway, but I did forget to mention that there is a possible landfill being proposed by Waste Management in the Blackwood area. So I didn't, I didn't mean to leave that one out. But it is my understanding that they would have to actually seek a special exception or a variance from the county's zoning hearing board to increase the tonnage. I guess according to the zoning that's in place right now, they would only be able to accept 500 tons per day. They would have to seek that special exception or variance to get that tonnage increase to 4,500 tons per day to make it worth their while to, you know, pursue that endeavor. So not sure when they plan on or if they're going to proceed with all of that, but I would...
As of right now, there's nothing official anywhere.
Right.
I can find in any township. The other than going to the township and whatever they did at that township meeting, informational meeting, I guess it was, I'm not sure. informational meeting, I guess it was, I, I'm not sure, there is nothing official anywhere in any township or at the county. And all three commissioners are on record saying, we have a landfill, so.
Okay. Right, okay, yeah, we appreciate that. Um, so I think maybe they were just trying to get their feelers out there and maybe approach the different townships where this would be located, um, to kind of see, would you guys be on board with this going through? Uh, so I think people need to make sure that they're letting it be. Now, now, we are not in favor of this. Uh, also, I want to do a plug for, and I think you said, Larry, that you go on there to see what comments and what's being posted. There's a Facebook page called Save the West End of Skookel County from Environmental Armageddon. Uh, they've gone through a couple of different reiterations of the name, but, uh, it's always been Save the West End or Save the West End of Skookel County. Um, on there, they have different meetings, like township meetings. They try to post like any kind of upcoming events, et cetera. I believe Higgins Township does have a meeting next week. I won't, I won't say the date because I don't want to get it wrong, but if people want to go on that Facebook page, they do have, uh, different meetings that they have posted on there. There's also gonna be a coffee and conversation with State Senator Dave Argle and State Rep Joanne Stare that is going to be next Tuesday, September third, at eight a.m. They always do them very early in the morning, eight to nine o'clock, and it's at the Higgins, Higgins Township Ambulance Building. And I did want to give a, a plug to Commissioner Hess in bringing up last week. You were, you were absolutely correct, Gary, in bringing up the four state reps and the state senator. They actually do have so much power, uh, much more so than the Board of Commissioners for a single county. Uh, these folks can enact legislation, they can actually place pressure on the State Department of Agriculture. And it's my understanding, so I'll read those names off, State Reps, uh, Joanne Stare, Tim Towdsick, Jamie Barton, Dane Watrow, and State Senator Dave Argle. So folks, you need to be putting phone calls into these people and putting pressure where pressure needs to be applied. And it's my understanding, someone said that Joanne Stare was actually appointed, or she's on some sort of agricultural board for the state? Yeah, that, that should be in.
I don't know if she's on it. I don't think she is, but I don't.
Because that, that would definite, definitely be interesting if that's the case. So, okay, thanks, Shelby.
Any other public comment for salary board? Can I motion approve the minutes for the salary board meeting on August fourteen?
So moved. Second.
On the question?
Commissioner Pudora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Can I motion approve the salary board?
Controller Yecantia?
Sorry.
Yes.
I have a motion to approve the salary board recession of Unskilled.
So moved. Second.
Commissioner Pudora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Controller Yecantia? Yes.
Uh, human resources?
Yes, commissioners, the tax claim, we create the position of clerk de justice, one per diem, effective nine three twenty four, and set salary for Deborah McDonald as the clerk de justice, one per diem, at fourteen point eight nine one three, effective nine three twenty four. In Court Administration, great position of treatment court coordinator, effective twenty eight twenty four, and great position of law clerk, effective nine three twenty four, that's per diem. Also, Court Administration set the salary of Raymond Dorian as the law clerk at forty-two point oh four, effective nine three twenty four, that's per diem. In the district attorney's office, adjust the hours of janitor, murder, murder time victim advocate, Article eight, rate is seventeen point three zero one nine, effective nine twenty three twenty four, that's, uh, changed from thirty-six hours to twenty-eight hours per day. And in drug and alcohol, set salary for Michelle Mailey, fiscal officer, one, at twenty-seven point three seven nine six, effective nine nine twenty four, that is all.
Uh, can I motion for the first two positions for tax claim?
So moved. Second.
On the question, please?
Commissioner Pudora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Controller Yecantia? Yes.
Can I motion for the three, uh, Court Administration positions?
So moved. Second.
On the question?
Commissioner Pudora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Controller Yecantia? Yes. And Judge Russell?
I can only vote on the, uh, treatment court coordinator.
Um, the treatment court? Okay, so.
It is, uh, Judge Rob's position, law firm's position.
Okay. Okay, so let's, well, Kate's at them, so.
So I can say, I'm voting yes on the-
On the treatment court?
Yeah.
So then, uh, can I motion, uh, vote on, uh, adjust the hours for the district attorney's office?
So moved. Second.
On the question?
Commissioner Pudora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Controller Yecantia? Yes. And district attorney, okay.
And the old, the reason that salary, there's a note here on why the, the, the readback salary is being cut is because it's funding for cuts to a grant which pays for the victim advocate's salary. So, uh, no motion for drug and alcohol, except for that one, so moved.
Second.
On the question?
Commissioner Pudora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heatherington?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
And Controller Yecantia? Yes.
Is there any new business?
I just wanted to make one comment on the state of the assessment. We engaged a consultant, our solicitor, Paula, uh, Lenrod, advised us not to proceed. The fact that we could, could get continuance is to spend more money would have not changed the situation. And as Mr., Mr., uh, Tim Bar said, our common level ratio's out of whack, so there's no chance, sense in fighting that fight and wasting more money. So I, I, all three commissioners thought about that, looked at it very hard, like, Gary, we discussed that many times, and then moving ahead and trying to, to avoid it was, was gonna be just a waste of county funds, so, just for record, so.
That wasn't happening, but it happened, that was three officials. I wasn't here with that. So, uh, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Um, Gary, what is that certification, what are you setting coming up for, about the commissioners?
For, it's all, uh, twenty, twenty twenty-six, I mean, I might be at the twenty twenty-five meeting in twenty twenty-six. It takes effect twenty twenty-six.
So the certification?
It would probably have to be twenty-five, like the last, or the fiscal year of twenty twenty-six.
Okay.
I would assume, so.
Okay. I was gonna say, get away from me.
Yeah. It's like an, like, a hundred and eight seconds, so.
Oh, listen.